We'll call a meeting to order. Couple of things I'd like to announce first. As you may well or not well aware, the meeting is direct today on TV. It's not taped, which it has been before. So whatever you say is going directly to the public. And in that line, you have to be recognized by me to speak. If you're going to speak, you have to go to the microphone and speak into that so that the public can hear you. Okay? We'll only take up the items that are on the agenda, the published agenda, which is A Waste, A Plus Waste, High Point, and Peter Freeman for 7-11 Plymouth Street. The minutes of the September 13th meeting. Anybody have any corrections, additions, comments on it? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. The first hearing tonight is to hear the petition of John Wyman Esquire for A Plus Waste and Recycling Services relative to his request to allow for a special permit per Section 4E2 of the zoning bylaws to establish a single stream recycling operation and composting operation of leaf and yard waste and related material and a variance per Section 5E3 side setback to affirm location of an existing building. The subject property is located at 88 River Street, Middleborough SS's map 002, lot 5463. Declaring all hearing open. It's a hearing that was originally started and then continued from September 13th, 2002. 2012, excuse me.
The windbag, not that one.
Seems like 2002. Would you like to say something before we go beyond that point?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only rise to hopefully invite the board to take action on this application. When we were here last, we went through the conditions of the grant. I have had circulated a draft decision. I think everyone has had some comments on it. So I think that's where we are and maybe get this thing resolved and wrapped up tonight.
Thank you. The board has a copy of the draft that was attached to the hearing notice tonight. Is there somebody that would like to read the motion into the record?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The floor is yours, sir.
So the motion states that we're voting to approve the petition of John Wyman Esquire for A Plus Waste and Recycling Services, Inc., relative to his request to allow for special permit per Section 4E2 of the zoning bylaws in effect at the time of the submission of the application under Section 3.0 Use Regulations, Section E Industrial Uses of the Revised and Codified Zoning Bylaw to Establish a Single Stream Recycling Operation and Composting Operation of Leaf and Yard Waste and Related Material. The subject's property is located at 88 River Street, Middleborough SS's map 002, lot 5463. This motion would be approved subject to the following stipulations. One, the landscaping shall be installed consistent with that shown on the site plan dated December 13th, 2013, revised through April 19th, 2013, including the attached planting detail dated July 27th, 2012. There shall be an additional line of spruce trees planted in a minimum of four to five foot height, 10 feet apart, and approximately 150 foot distance from the building. Any plantings that die within a year must be replaced. All landscaping shall be maintained in a live condition and must be completed prior to June 15th, 2014. Two, the hours of operation shall not exceed the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday. This facility shall be closed on Sundays and federally recognized holidays. Three, the petitioner shall maintain the odor abatement plan for leaf and yard waste composting facility consistent with that submitted to the board and dated January 2013. Four, the petitioner shall implement and maintain an integrated pest management service program with Waltham Services to deal with the potential pest issues as per the Commercial Pest Control Service Agreement by Waltham dated September 19th, 2013. There shall be no other product composted on site without a review by this board for any additional considerations and/or conditions. The petitioner shall obtain and maintain all appropriate state municipal permits for the proposed operation prior to the commencement of any operations authorized by this special permit. Six, the petitioner shall obtain all required building permits, permits from all of the departments within the Middleborough Inspection Service Department and any other municipal department. Seven, no Jake signage will be prominently placed along the site's frontage on River Street. Eight, washing of all vehicles and equipment shall take place within the buildings. No washing or equipment can be washed inside the building until the plans and specifications for an industrial holding tank is submitted showing the location within the facility site, the contract for the appropriate waste hauler to be provided to this board, along with the maintenance contracts and certification to DEP. Nine, the site shall be used only for the operation of a single stream recycling facility and composting operation as designated on the application. Ten, the petitioner shall demolish any portion of the existing buildings along the easterly sideline that encroach upon the 150 foot side setback requirements of the zoning bylaw. The petitioner shall demolish any portion of the existing buildings by December 31st, 2013. There shall be no operating of any business activities within the 150 foot setbacks. This does not include accessory parking. Eleven, welding shall only be done inside the building. Twelve, the petitioner shall police their River Street and Auburn Street property to pick up any trash that comes from the operation consistent with his operation recycling. This shall be done on a regular basis, no less than every two weeks. Thirteen, the compost business shall consist of yard and leaf waste and no more than 30 tons per day of organic material as permitted by Mass DEP and as defined in 310 CMR 16.02. Fourteen, the petitioner shall test the well water annually pursuant to the Board of Health Regulations. Fifteen, this is subject to the Conservation Commission's approval.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion by the board as to what's in there? I think everybody's seen it, everybody who's had it for a long enough period of time. Yes, sir.
Just for John, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, John Wyman for the applicant. Just a point of clarification on number five. I think the board recognizes that there is a composting operation that has been there for some and has been in suspension since we've been going through the process. And I'm assuming in reading that language that there is going to be some lag time between the startup of the single stream inside the building because the building's going to have to be outfitted primarily with a fire suppression system and then the applicant's intention is to continue with a composting operation. I assume that, I read that, and I think that's okay, but I...
Which number are you talking about?
Number five.
Number five.
It's condition number five, yeah.
Okay.
Just as part of the commencement of any operations, and I just want the board to understand at least that...
I can understand it, but how long do we go on?
What do you mean?
Well, you're going to clean up what's there.
We're going to start, we're going to get, we have permission now under this permit to conduct it. And we also have permission to get into a single stream recycling facility, which is a pretty massive engagement. So we have permission, we have permits for the composting, composting. And I'm assuming that we can continue to do that after we get the permit from this board, even before the single streams gets up and running.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might? I think the, what's being said here is the composting portion of his business has already been permitted by DEP and the single stream has not, and that's the one that's got most of all of the conditions tied to it and the stipulations in this. So I don't think it's an unfair request to lift, if you will, that gentleman's agreement of no activity and so on and so forth, but to go ahead and allow them to do the composting and not allow anything else to take place other than that until the, all of the other material, you know, the single stream, like he said, the fire and the health, the part of the water and all of that stuff takes place, so. But I don't think one should be necessarily tied to the other.
I would be in agreement with that.
Any other comments, questions?
Should we have a vote on that, just to?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the operation of his composting as of his permitted date.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. It would adopt the motion that everybody has in front of them. And if there are no other questions, just for the sake of the audience who's sitting here that says, "What the heck are they talking about?", this has been going on since September of 2012. We finally have come to an agreement between the town, or the board representing the town, and the petitioner to establish this recycling on River Street and Auburn Street on the town, close to the town line. Motions were made and seconded to adopt this. Mrs. Pulsifer?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Diagley?
In favor.
Mr. Freitas?
In favor.
Ms. Eggleston?
In favor.
Mr. Priestley?
In favor.
Votes five to nothing in favor to adopt the motion as printed, okay? We will get you a copy of it anyway, and it'll go on file within the next few days.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the board for the patience.
It's been a long time.
You appreciate the work that you guys put in.
Thank you. Eric, the next one's yours, sir. The next one is the Southeast Regional Network High Point Treatment Center. I did not sit on the first one, and when most of this was brought up, Mr. Priestley chaired that one there. Thought he would continue to chair this tonight. Your yours.
So as you know, this is a continuation of a meeting that began on August 22nd, 2013. And in that meeting, I believe we covered a significant amount of ground. A lot of good comments came out of that meeting and a lot of action items for a number of things to take place. So I'm going to actually open it up to the petitioner first, and then we'll go through some general housekeeping based on some of your submissions. I don't think they'll all be read into the record, but we will acknowledge them and make sure that the board has copies of them. But I know there's several points in the seventh page that you might be interested in discussing briefly, anyway.
Thank you. Actually, most of my comments do tie right into the report that I submitted. Good evening. My name is Daniel Monbauer. I am the president and CEO of High Point Treatment Center, Semcoa, and Southeast Regional Network. I am here tonight to address the concerns raised four weeks ago concerning the redevelopment of the former St. Luke's Hospital on Oak Street. The first issue that was raised at the last meeting was the number of 911 calls per year at our Plymouth campus. And I'd like to point out to the board and to the community, there's many differences between our proposed Middleborough Hospital and our Plymouth campus. First of all, the size of the two facilities. The Plymouth campus consists of 105-bed facility, where Middleborough Hospital would be a 72-bed facility, so it's 32% smaller than Plymouth. Also of great significance is the scope of services at the two different facilities. The facility here in Middleborough would be a 72-bed inpatient locked psychiatric hospital, where our facility in Plymouth is 105 beds, but only 16 of those beds are a locked inpatient unit. The remaining beds of the campus consist of a 32-bed community detox program, a 24-bed unlocked dual diagnosis program, and a 32-bed rehab program. The, looking at the 911 calls themselves, the largest portion of those calls were for ambulances and about eight or 10% of the, about 68% of the calls where ambulances are basically abandoned or accidental calls. The idea that I came up with to minimize the use of town ambulances would be to enter into a direct agreement with Brewster Ambulance Company, who has a facility here in Middleborough. And I already met with the president of Brewster Ambulance, and he'd be more than happy to be responsible for taking our ambulance calls. One of the things I'd like to point out about the ambulances and the use of ambulances is that our Plymouth facility, the majority of beds, like I said, are community-based, not unlocked beds. And in our community beds, we're doing detox services and rehab services, but there's no medical clearance to go into a community detox, where the majority of admissions who come into a psychiatric hospital actually are coming through in emergency rooms. And when you come in through an emergency room, they provide medical clearance as part of the emergency room service. So I think this is another difference to point out to why one facility would have much more needs than the other facility. Another issue that was raised at the last meeting was the issue of security on the site and why, I think we do an excellent job with security, that all our staff are trained in crisis intervention, and I think we really do, really an excellent job, quite frankly. I do understand about the concern, particularly being located in downtown. So I am proposing to a 12-hour day of security to monitor the parking lots in the campus. And the reality is those 12 hours, most of our mission discharges, visitors, and activity in the campus all happen within that 12-hour day. Most of the rest of the evening, basically, folks are sleeping. So if the board accepted that recommendation, the only thing I would ask would be the opportunity to come back at a later date and discuss the need for that security, but certainly I'd be willing to do that as part of our opening. The next item that we spent quite a bit of time on at the last meeting was parking. And looking at the bylaws of the town, there really was not a bylaw that pertains to parking for hospitals here in Middleborough. So I engaged Tibbetts Engineering to do a review of the parking requirements in surrounding communities. And his review really came up with that most of the communities surrounding you, it's basically about one parking space per bed that you operate. In fact, in the last five years, High Point has built two facilities, and in both facilities we built, the town required one parking space per bed that we operated. Both of those facilities are in Brockton. I know in the packet, there's actually a list of every community that Tibbetts Engineering reviewed and the parking requirements for either hospitals or another like-type facility. We, however, did go back and revisit the parking. One of the boards suggested maybe looking at the rotary area. And so we actually did propose removing the rotary because it really isn't very functional anyway. And we were able to increase the parking spaces on the property to 115 parking spaces. The other item that we spent some time talking about at the last meeting was drainage off the property. And we again engaged Tibbetts Engineering to review the current drainage on the property and to put together a proposal on how we can improve the drainage from the property. And Tibbetts is here tonight, so certainly they could speak to the engineering work that they're proposing, but they did come up with a solution to greatly improve the drainage off of the property as it is today. If the board doesn't mind, I'd like to spend just a few minutes talking about some of the benefits of our proposal. Is that okay?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. The first item I'd like to point out is the current facility itself, quite frankly. I mean, reality is, the facility is really light in your downtown area. I mean, it's been empty for a decade. It's been vandalized. I mean, we found people inside the building already. We've re-secured the building multiple times, it's been broken into multiple times since it's been donated to us. And it really, quite frankly, is a nicer we're in town. We expect that we will spend more than $10 million in construction to bring the facility back online. And quite frankly, to build that facility from the ground up would be far more money because the building was built as a hospital. And as a hospital, it meets, the newer section of the building meets the code of a hospital. So it's an extremely expensive building for someone like me to replicate, where quite frankly, most of the other folks who would like the property would want to rip the building down because it really does not lend itself to a lot of conversions. I think that's one of the reasons it sat empty for the last decade, that it really is not an easy building to really figure out an appropriate plan for. And I do believe our plan is a suitable plan for the property. Of course, I mentioned before about the number of staff we would have at the property. We have 200 jobs at the property. 150 of those positions would be brand-new jobs to our company. Right now, we have a little bit more than 1,000 employees in our company, just to kind of give you an idea of our size. And where, most of our facilities are located in Brockton, New Bedford, and Plymouth. And in all three of those communities, we have more than 100 town residents working for our company in all three of those communities. And quite frankly, I expect the same type of numbers here in Middleborough. Which really brings me to the issue of neighborhood and neighborhood issues that our staff live in the neighborhoods around us. If you look at the size of Plymouth, it's not that large of a town for the number of employees we have. We make up the neighborhood. We're sprinkled throughout the neighborhood, and certainly, we're just as concerned about the neighborhood as anyone else because we live there, we work there. The other thing that we talked a little about at the last meeting was the admissions into publicly health-funded and contracted addiction programs out of Middleborough. At the last meeting, it was mentioned by one of the speakers that there were 329 admissions of Middleborough residents into publicly health-funded contracted services. Yesterday, I was preparing for this meeting, and I went on the web, and they came out with the 2012 numbers. And there was 464 admissions into DPA contracted substance abuse services in 2012. So in two years, the number of admissions for addiction services in this town in Middleborough has increased by over 100 residents. Now, it's probably not exactly 100 because they go by admissions, a person could be admitted more than once, but quite frankly, you don't find that many people that are going to get admitted multiple times in the same year because there's an extreme shortage of beds for detox and rehab services, outpatient counseling services here in Massachusetts. So quite frankly, people wait for days calling, trying to get services in the Commonwealth in Massachusetts. I get calls from families trying to find beds. My staff gets calls from families. It's really a sad state that there really is not enough services in the Commonwealth to meet the needs. And ironically, the town in Middleborough has zero providers that are funded by the Department of Public Health under contract to provide addiction services. So what I'm saying is, all 464 folks that were admitted into services in 2012 had to be served somewhere besides Middleborough, even though they're Middleborough residents. And quite frankly, I suspect there would be a lot more folks served if you had better access to services. And certainly, by having us in your community, we could help improve access not only to inpatient psychiatric services, but also to detox, rehab services, and outpatient services. The other bit of data I'd like to share with you is, we actually run the South Shore Women's Resource Center, which is a domestic violence center, and Middleborough is one of the towns that we serve. A lot of folks don't realize that it's connected to our agency because the South Shore Women's Resource Center, their priority and their goal and mission is to work with folks affected by domestic violence. In 2011, we serviced 33 women in Middleborough. In 2012, we had 90 women from Middleborough who needed services. There's a lot of other things that High Point can do, quite frankly, and work with the community and help the community. Certainly, we're involved in a lot of prevention efforts, education efforts, and I really do believe that we could help the town work on funding for grants and other programs that could improve Middleborough. So I would really love the opportunity to work with you and improve the health, quite frankly, of Middleborough. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Well, I have a couple of comments, if I might. And it's really just surrounding last meeting and really culling over and, you know, weeding out and getting really to the fundamental concerns. So this isn't in any particular order, but, so, parking is a huge issue. You're going from 98 to 115, and your target is 325. That's a big, that's a big number. Now, the zoning exists. It didn't exist then, it does now, so that's what you're facing. But again, this is not in any particular order, just deal with the issues. And that might be the easy one, okay? Then we had our chief of police, who came in with some pretty compelling testimony based upon High Point's Plymouth facility. And albeit, the numbers that were presented, I won't say they were skewed, but they certainly weren't defined to know that better than 50% of them went to ambulatory calls, and then it went to all others. So again, we're just weeding through the information. And I think the underlying question is, from a safety standpoint, which I appreciate you addressing to the degree that you did with the onsite security for 12 hours a day, you didn't mention, although it's in your material, 24-hour video surveillance both in and out of the building. So that's got to bring some level of comfort in any way. But the underlying question is, is that facility, that building, not High Point, I think everybody would collectively agree that there is a substance abuse problem everywhere, including Middleborough. And the question comes down to, is that building a good site for that facility? That, to me, is the real crutch of what we're going to be dealing with. Along with that, we have a very much an unknown. We have no tax revenue. We have services that will be utilized, police, fire, whatever. And we don't know the extent of the drain on town services, if you will, for that. So even if we picked up your petition from downtown Middleborough and we moved your building someplace else, I would still be interested in knowing, as a taxpayer of this town, what the drain on services is going to be. What is the actual economic impact, both positive and negative? What is the actual economic impact, both positive and negative? I mean, you can't add 150 people to the payroll that are local residents and think that we're not going to get a positive benefit someplace downtown, or whatever the case may be, they're going to be spending money someplace. So, there's positives and negatives. So, my thought was, with your permission, what I'd like to do is to employ, really, a peer review of an economic impact analysis that would be done, and I just want to widen the scope out just a little tiny bit, because there's another dynamic in play here that I don't want to lose sight of. And that dynamic is, that we have a second facility, psychiatric facility, right next to your proposed facility, and I have to believe that individually, you might have one result, combined, you might have a completely different picture. Don't know. Have no idea. So, what I would like to do, there is actually a company, RKG Associates, who does all of these economic impacts, they're a nationally recognized company, they've, in fact, they've done worldwide work, and the peer review is something that you would pay for, and I believe it would be somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000 to have this review done completely, and we would look at all of the elements to having that facility, and they would be basing it on like communities, with like areas and so on and so forth. With your permission and your blessing, I would like to either, for you to say, yes, I think that's a good idea, go ahead, and if so, then you'll get a certified bank check or whatever we do, and you'll give it to Tammy, our administrative assistant, and we will go ahead, or we can go get a formalized contract from them to which you can enter into, and, you know, remember they're working for us at your expense. I appreciate that, by the way. So, but I think that is very, very important to determine. The safety issues that you addressed, you know, we can, we can talk about those all day long, and some of the other issues, but I think before we even move into the number of parking spaces, I think we all want to agree, there's an addiction problem, in general, in society, and specifically in Middleborough. But what I want to narrow in on right away, so as to not waste anyone's time or resources, is, is that facility, that building, is it that, is that an appropriate place for that type of treatment center? That's what I want to focus on. And, quite frankly, I don't know if anyone here is smart enough to answer those questions, and then to address the concerns like Chief Gates had, our fire chief had, as far as, you know, they're already taxed, they're already stretched, there's not money available to do this, and so, we may find that there is a number, if you will, that comes up that says, hey, the net result is, it's going to be this much money every single year, that is not something that you planned for, voted for, or have paid for. And that might become your burden, if you choose to take it, and we then think that that site is, you know, a good site. I also recognize that your willingness on working with the fencing and the butters and all of those things, and those are all towards the end of the hearing process whereby, I think what I heard last time, on August 22nd, was, I don't think it's the right place. I'm very afraid of the types of patients that we'll be dealing with, especially given discharge and so on and so forth, and from the municipalities, who's going to cover the cost of all of this? So, but a lot of those things are unknowns, which this impact analysis will address. So, I'd like to do that, and get that done and out of the way first, and then have some real discussion as a board, bring it out to the open for the public to entertain and to mull over and to have questions about it, and we'll all learn together. So, I know you're poised to spend a lot of money on renovating the building, I know you have a certain amount of money that you've set aside for things such as this, and I'm not sure we have a lot else to discuss tonight, unless there's something that's new that we haven't talked about, I mean, we talked for a very long time at the last hearing, and I think we got at a lot of really good issues, but I think we need to address some of the core issues. And that is, first and foremost, to me, economically, with two facilities next to each other like that, what are the benefits and the cons? How do you feel about that?
I don't have a problem with this study, and I certainly can reach out to Tammy tomorrow and talk to her about coordinating a study. The only question I really have, if you don't mind, is to revisit the parking, because the parking standard that was presented at the last meeting was for a medical facility like a clinic, not for a hospital, so that's why the number came out so high, so I didn't know what your...
Well, the parking was based upon square footage, basement, first floor, second floor, and the square footage translates into X amount of parking, okay? So, that was where the number came from. So, to me, again, that used to be a hospital, and it used to be more beds, and it used to have an emergency department, it used to have a lot of different things, and I get that. And, I may be one voter on this petition that says, I don't really care about the other 200 spots. I might be that guy. But all I'm saying is, there is zoning in place right now that says, I believe, that based upon the square footage, that you require 325 places.
Not to be argumentative, but the, the square footage of the whole building is not, it's not a medical facility as described in your, I don't believe, I'm not a zoning expert, so I sort of hesitate in saying it, but, but anyway, it sounds like there might be some flexibility in parking.
Okay, well, and you know what the really good news is? That's not my problem, that's Bob Whelan's problem. And he's very, very good, and he will take care of that, not a problem at all, but he'll, he'll direct us in terms of, this is what it's meant to be, and this is the jumping off point, so...
All right, thank you.
And again...
I appreciate it.
I think parking is going to be like the least of the issues that we need to address, because before you leave the podium, I would like to have, anyone want to read this in? Because I'm...
I'll read it in.
Well, actually, I believe Josephine wanted to read it in, is she here tonight? Or is she...
She is.
So...
There she is.
Would, would you like to do that, or would you like to, for us to do it on your behalf?
You can raise your hand.
Oh, come on up.
So, you all have a copy? I didn't know if Tammy got it to you.
We do.
Dan, did you have a copy of that? Here you go.
You're welcome.
I do have a call, so I hope my voice is okay. Josephine Urthwitz from the Housing Authority, and I'm representing the tenants at Nemasket, and they are very concerned about this and McLean Hospital, excuse me. Nemasket Housing is for the elderly, and it is located from Frank Street to Maple Ave, so we have High Point and the facility's there at one end, and we have McLean Hospital at the other. The average age of the elderly there is about 82, we have people in their mid-90s there. They're very concerned, safety and security, about, you know, everything else that's been going on here, that has been said. They, a couple of them have family members that have worked at the High Point in Plymouth, and they have been told that the police have been there almost daily, and that some of the employees have been attacked, assaulted, hurt, whatever, and so they're very afraid that this type of thing will be brought to Middleborough. I, I think that's the main gist of the letter, and we would like to find out if this is going to be approved, obviously, and to try to ask the zoning board to take some steps for security and safety of the elderly residents in the area.
Absolutely, that's fair. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Liz?
I did have a couple of comments that had popped up while you were speaking, so if you don't mind. This may not be the time to necessarily discuss it, I just want to bring these up. When the survey is done, we have something, then perhaps we can go in, but a couple of things have struck me. In your presentation last time, and in the presentation today, there was no real mention made of the kind of treatment and the length of time that treatment is given for substance abuse. I bring this up because, when McLean Hospital came before us, I was taken aback, is I think about the best way to put it, that they have a treatment period of one week, which struck me as very short for people who have psychiatric problems. And I understand that in many cases, this may be due to insurance. In other words, the insurance company will pay for one week because statistically, that's what they've come down to. This may, as I said, this may not be the time to discuss length of treatment, all of the rest of it, but I think that would also give us a better idea of what's going in with High Point, and the differences between what you want with Middleborough and what is in other areas. I liked kind of what you did with the parking, getting rid of the rotary in front of the I thought, that's a very clever way of adding on spaces. But I also noticed that, again, at the last meeting and at this meeting, there doesn't seem to be any, I guess procedure is about the best term I can put, for what happens when people leave the facility. And I think that, if that can be clearly laid out, people would understand what the procedure is, that there are procedures in place, and will sort of lessen some of the The fact of the matter is, I'm sure that we could go through everyone here in this room, and somebody has some family member that has either had drug problems, had alcohol problems, or had mental issues. At the same time, we've just had three national tragedies with individuals who obviously were having psychotic problems, and we've had tragedies that go in, so we are a tad bit concerned. And as I said, these are questions that don't need to be discussed necessarily right now, perhaps when we do the study, as Eric said, when we come back, but these are things I'd like you to kind of say, this is a concern that I, I kept hearing from the audience, it's concerns that I kind of had. And I think security, it, you know, it's, I grant you, I'm not 80 years old, but I don't necessarily want to be walking in that part of town and have somebody who's perhaps not quite all there, or who's acting out, or having, I'd like to know that there might be something I could do other than help police, sort of a thing. So, that might be something just to consider, to be able to present, to give us some idea of what the facility would do.
Just quickly, the length of stay that McLean's quoted is correct, the average length of stay in a psychiatric hospital is about seven days. On the issue around length of stay in addiction treatment programs, the average length of stay in a detox is about five days, however, a majority of folks would then go to somebody's rehab program, and would stay in a substance abuse rehab program for another 10 to 14 days. The discharge planning is really at the heart of what you do in a psychiatric hospital or addiction program, and...
If I might. There is discharge planning that is aimed at the individual. Hi, you have a drinking problem, we've got you sobered up, this is what we think you should do, that's that one discharge program. The other program is, hi, you've, this is the end of your thing, you're sober, here's the door. And, what happens when that person physically walks through that door? Where is their security? Do they get driven somewhere? Do we wait till somebody comes and picks them up? That's the kind of thing that I think we're a little bit more concerned about.
Sure, absolutely.
Is that, what is it that you do? I worked, as I've often said, in the Department of Corrections, and they didn't really just open the door and let an inmate, you've done your time, walk out the door. There had to be somebody there to take them away, especially at Bridgewater Complex there, because there's no train station, and there's no taxi waiting. So, there had to be somebody or something to be able to move them from the location to their home, to their community, to where they're going, and I think that's what we're more concerned about, rather than the individual's treatment plan.
Yeah, I mean, we do provide transportation for discharged clients, some family members will also pick up clients, but certainly, we don't have any expectation that anyone's going to walk from the facility to the train station. We certainly will transport folks to either home, if they're going on to other type of housing, whether it be a recovery home, or Department of Public Health or Mental Health housing program. Certainly, we want folks to be successful when they leave the hospital, and the next step of where they go is extremely important to their success.
All right, and I think a lot of what you just said was spoken at the first hearing, pretty much based upon the townspeople's concerns, and we will drill down in there more narrowly, define and make sure we all understand as we progress. So, I have just a couple of questions. First of all, to anyone in the audience, is there anybody that has... I will. Does anybody want to speak about something that is new, that we've not covered, a concern that is on your mind? And if so, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium. Go right ahead. Just name your name and address.
Bob Dunphy, 4 Brenway Drive, Middleborough, Massachusetts. At the last meeting, you had mentioned that one of the things that High Point does is they provide services, beds basically, at no cost to some people as a way to give back to the community. Being a little bit self-serving, you also mentioned that you also do counseling at the hospital, that primarily local people go to. Is there a possibility that you would consider providing some of those services for the local community? Because that's something that definitely the local community would get benefit out of, rather than possibly a bed going to somebody from Dartmouth or someplace else. And the second point is, whereas High Point has a great amount of knowledge of addiction and mental health, would it be possible also for you to provide some information to the local school system, or possibly the police department, on the best ways to deal with some of the issues that you may see in the mental health arena, to help out our town in dealing with some of this stuff?
The answer to all your requests are absolutely yes. We certainly always prioritize folks in the community that we're working in, in both inpatient services and outpatient services. We actually also are a contract provider with public health, we help support services for folks with no insurance, and on top of that, we provide a lot of free care with no coverage at all from High Point. On the issue of education in the school systems, or for the public safety officers in town, we certainly be more than happy to provide both materials and staff to provide education.
Mr. Chairman. Steve Spataro, School Street, former selectman in the town of Middleborough. I was traveling for work, so I hope I am not repeating, I did read up the material, and again, I don't want to waste anybody's time. I did read up the material, and again, I don't want to waste anybody's time. But when I sat on the Board of Selectmen, we were, and this building was granted, we were told that it was going to be management offices. Clearly, as a town, we've said no to jobs. Not every job is, it's not that it's not a good job. I did my research too, and contrary to what I heard, I talked to some people that work at High Point, and they talked about how well-run a facility the organization is. But, we often, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or the zoning board, or any other board in town, get told about the common good that we have to address. We have numerous sober houses that have been added to the community for which we cannot regulate. We have other facilities. So, I've never known Middleborough to roll up the sidewalk and not welcome people, and not help their neighbor. But Lakeville has no facility like this. Carver has no facility. Eric, he was making those points. So I think that, and maybe it's not the domain of the zoning board, maybe it's a collective community discussion. How many of a certain type of business do you need? Is our claim to fame as an anchor facility in the downtown of Middleborough, that it's a locked psychiatric facility? So, what I've heard today, and I appreciate your comments about a study, but are we giving false hope to the applicant? Clearly, this building was a donation. It came gratis. And it's of more benefit, as the gentleman mentioned, to make it a hospital than it is as a management facility. But that's their concern. You've mentioned about the cost to the community of services. They're not going to lose money on a bed. This is not a nonprofit organization. This is for-profit organization. So again, it may not be your purview. Maybe it's collective town boards. But the idea of is this of best interest for the community? Clearly, Cisco with a well-run facility, and we saw Lakeville say, "No, I'm not interested." This could be the world's best-run facility, and I hear it's a great-run facility. But, to your point, do you want some, a number of tens of beds down at the end of Forest Street, and another number of tens beds up here? And there's a lot of people in the community, and I'm sure this one was covered last time, that talked about their property values. Now, you don't have to worry about that in total, but individuals that are sitting in the room today are concerned about it, and safety, and those other types of things. So I would ask this board, and whoever else you need to reach out to, to come to some collective agreement, and either tell the applicant, "Yes, in theory, we're interested in the facility, or in theory, we're not." And, you know, from that perspective, I think I've made all the points that I want to make. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And I would say also, Mr. Spataro, that one of the things that has always concerned most of us on the board, I'm sure, if not all of us, is the decisions that we make thirty years from now still have to be the right decision, not just for today. And so, that's like a frightening thought, when you think about it. And so, I take your comments quite seriously and appreciate them.
Well, I'm looking at faces that I've seen on these boards for years, and I know that you folks take it, and the dedication that you make to the community. There are just things that are coming into the community to service those that are less fortunate that we have no ability to regulate. Whether it's the hotels that are being used as housing for people less fortunate. Well, we have the police department going to those facilities as well, with no compensation coming to us. But the people that own the facilities are making money. And I think there becomes a point in time where we say, "We've done our share." When you talk about the increase of employment by fifteen percent on the total, a hundred and fifty jobs out of a thousand, but the other facilities are in communities much larger than ours. And so, while we do, may have four hundred calls, you know, the other communities have a host of calls as well, and they have no facility. So, I don't know that we should feel compelled to say yes, because somebody, and I'm sure you and we aren't trying to do that, but make us feel guilty like we're not helping the community. Just like when the people tell us, "We need more forty Bs." I did a survey of housing that met the requirement for low income. And one-third of the town is under the dollar level that a family that was low-income could afford. So sometimes people, we don't have the ability to aggregate. But I bet if you looked at the McLean facility and all the personal residents that have been turned into other facilities, you looked at the help that we give people through the facilities in North Middleborough, that you'd find that Middleborough as a community has done more than its fair share in total. And just because as a town, we have six hundred homes within a mile of downtown, many of them with a large quantity of rooms. And we have, you can buy property in Middleborough reasonably, and you can buy some facilities at much less expense, especially when they're given, than some other communities. You know, that doesn't mean that every industry is the one that we want. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Anderson, fifty-one Meadowbrook Lane. Just a couple of quick things. I really appreciate the board's approach, because I think you're right on track with requesting the analysis and looking on the strains of the town resources. But I'd also like to say, maybe we could expand that at some point, because I think that's foremost, the most important thing. Also, look at maybe real estate, impact on real estate in the town, impacts to businesses in the town, impacts, you know, to drugs overall in the town, maybe by arrests or whatnot. But to expand it so we can kind of relate, as somebody paying taxes in the town, how it impacts, you know, our assets. And lastly, I'd like to look out down the road, specifically what you would do for the town, because I think that at the cost of High Point, they should show us what the benefits are to Middleborough, in addition to just kind of saying loosely, you know, the percentage of people that live in the town that might work there. But that's not something that's very concrete, because maybe there's not people in this town that have the level of education and whatnot that you'd require for a position there. I don't know. It could or could not be. But that maybe we just look at, show us, what's the benefit for them coming here? What's it going to do for our homeowners, our business people, the town? And this is after you show us that we're going to be safe and not strain our resources. Thank you.
And I believe, John, you might be able to speak to this a little bit better. But the economic impact, does that not cover real estate and things such as that? Because my assumption is that we want to look at the total picture, not just, you know, strain on services, so to speak.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. The study that the board has the right to require, and it sounds like the applicant has agreed to that requirement, I still advise the board to vote tonight to make that a formal part of the record as a requirement. The scope is really up to the board. And I think the original thought was, as the chairman was saying, is a cost-benefit analysis to the town of Middleborough. But that certainly includes impact on public services, impact on public safety, impact on surrounding businesses. And I think derivative of that is impact on property values. So what I would say, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, is if the applicant is agreeing to a scope, at least to start with, I'd ask the firm, RKG, to provide the board with a proposal inclusive of that scope. And the board could expand it or contract it, as you saw fit, and make sure it includes all the items that you think are a requirement. I'd also say, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just in terms of a foundation for the board's decision, and I appreciate the selectmen's comments, and I agree in terms of, and I think that the board was at this position last time. If the board felt that this project didn't fit either numerically because of the zoning bylaw in consultation with the building commissioner, or didn't qualify for a special permit, then I think it would be more equitable to tell the applicant that right away. But I think where it's not clear that the board is going to deliberate on this, I would urge the board to have this kind of support in the record to either defend a denial or defend an approval with conditions. I think that's just part of the special permit adjudicative process. So having said that, I think the scope is really important to the board so that you can base your decision on this and any other evidence that you need. And if it takes the applicant a couple iterations, rather, consulting a couple iterations to get the board what it needs, I think that's well worth the time and the applicant's money.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We had two comments from our colleagues here on the board. You guys can fight over who goes first.
All right. Last week, we discussed a little bit about property taxes. And we didn't come to any conclusion. Do you presently pay property taxes in the other communities that you're in?
No, we do not.
Do you plan on paying, or could you pay property taxes in Middleborough?
So then we could look at, I mean, I think that's part of the purpose of the study? Is what it sounds like? Correct?
Yes, yeah, exactly, Joe. I mean, the whole study would say, "This is what you're losing with this type of facility, in terms of, you know, revenue, tax revenue, drain on services for our chief of police and his department, and so on and so forth." And all of that culminates up into a number that many have fee-for-services arrangements whereby, you know, they just...
Fee in lieu of taxation.
Yeah, fee in lieu of taxation. And so, and that's really, that's really down the road, because what we don't understand, we don't have any clue, really, of what it is that we're dealing with. So, in terms of the number. So, but your question is exactly what will be addressed in a line item within the analysis of...
I don't see why it can't be addressed now.
Well, because it's one part of a big number. It's one part of a big picture.
That's fine, but I'd like to know the intent of the company as it stands right now. Do you have any, pay any taxes at all? Or any, what did you call them, supplemental taxes in any of the communities that you are associated with?
No, right now, basically, we contribute to communities basically through providing free services to the communities that we're in. I mean, last year, and I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, we provided one point eight million dollars in free services as part of our charitable mission in the communities we work in.
Yep, no, I understand that. I remember hearing that. But in Middleborough, if this study comes out and says that you need to pay property taxes of some sort, or equivalent to that, that you'd be willing to do that?
I certainly will consider every part of the report and talk to the board about that, sure. I mean, I'm not opposed to working with the board, trying to find an equitable agreement. So...
That's really kind of a surprise to me. But I'll take your word for that, I guess. I don't know what else I can say at this point. But, you know, that, I just hope that what you're saying is true. And the question is, is, you know, if this is a ten-million-dollar project, how much of it would be technically taxed? Five million, for example, if you were taxed? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I honestly don't know neither. But I think the study will probably answer the questions about the benefits and the costs associated with our facility, I think is at the heart of the study, is my understanding.
Okay. All right. That's enough for now, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, considering the concern of the neighbors, and I'm pretty sure to a lot of people in this room, I believe, and I insist, that we have twenty-four-hour security-on-duty qualified people because of your unpredictable number of expectations is to their mental capacities.
Oh, you got halfway there, one. And I believe, when you stated it on the twenty-second of August, you said, "At least for a period of time, until there's some level of comfortability." So maybe it's a step-down program. Maybe it's twenty-four hours for the first year and a half, two years. Maybe it's twelve hours after that, and maybe it goes away in three or four years, right? I mean, you're looking for a level of comfort upfront. And so is the residence, right?
But the security of the town and the people.
So, and that's down the road. But I think Mr. Diego's comments are valuable only because of the number of comments that we've heard already. So, yeah, is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, just one other question. Will the survey that you're talking about doing poll businesses that are already in town to see what type of economic gain they would see, or economic cost it would be to their businesses? And will you be polling, from a real estate perspective, what the impact of the citizens that are paying taxes, real estate taxes, might have on their property values and their ability to resell their property after such a facility is moved into town?
My understanding, and I think I'll let John answer it definitively, but normally, it's done by comparative studies. And of like facilities, like areas, like businesses, so on and so forth. And we are looking for the benefits as well as the costs. So, and I'm not sure, does RKG do polling? Well, I mean, I suppose we could direct them to do polling.
If, like, Mr. Chairman, I think that's an excellent suggestion. And I think it's important, because there's a qualitative aspect to this that is independent of the quantitative aspect. Because it's a special permit, you, as the board, get to incorporate poll. So, I would say absolutely, I think, without polling the downtown businesses, owners, and members as to their quantitative and qualitative concerns, the board would only be looking at it in merit study. My sense, knowing the people who want to have, is this is much more than just a quantitative step. It's the perception of impact, it's the plan, it's the town's thirty-year effort to get the downtown vibrant again. So I think this study would, towards direction, would very much be both quantitative and qualitative. The reason why I'm so confident in that, and again, I think it's the perfect suggestion, is RKG's a planning firm as well as, I mean, I'm...
Excuse me, John. You need to go to the microphone.
Right, the people at home watching live can't hear you. Can anyone else hear you speak? Please do the microphone.
So, Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, I think the answer is yes. That is qualitative and quantitative. And I think polling the downtown business members, owners, and potential businesses are part and parcel of the study. I think the board needs that information to render a substantive decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, could I also, while I just have the microphone, Mr. Freitas's comments about, or questions to the applicants about payments in lieu of taxes. So pilot programs are very common, very defensible. The board, in its special permit powers, could, if you saw fit, if this were an approvable project, could impose as a condition annual payments in lieu of taxes. And what I'd advise the board to do is you consult with your assessor, and you would determine what the real estate tax would be if this were normative taxable property, and that would be a condition of your approval. So the fact that the institution might have tax-exempt status is completely irrelevant to your powers as a special permit granting authority. So, the way to formulate that is really the way you would do it for any business, and do that through the assessor's office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, there is also other resources at your disposal. The Massachusetts Municipal Association probably has some studies that we might be able to get for free. And one of the things that we, and I was as guilty as it is anybody else, we don't necessarily always do, is reach out, when you're talking about a survey, to some of the other departments, because they may know something that's within their purview or an area of expertise that should be considered, either on the positive side for the institution, or just to be looked at. One of the other things was, in lieu of tax payment, we have a history with that. We were talking about if Cisco came, or somebody developed a property in Lakeville, that where they were looking at water from Middleborough, would we ask for an in lieu of tax payment for that? So we already, as a town, have a history of proposition to organizations that were going to consume something from the community, asking for a remuneration that would make the town whole. In lieu of taxes also assumes that the services that are rendered against those taxes are consistent and proportional to that of any other community. So if we found that the community was having exceptionally high percentage of policing, then I guess one of the things we could ask the selectmen to do, or some other group in town to look at, is cost per service. If the average home is against the number of police calls, or fire calls, has two calls. Maybe we, as a town, could say something like, "Okay, we'll give you six calls for free." And then after that, you start paying for the services that you're rendering. So there's a whole bunch of creative things that we could probably do that would allow us to get compensated if the board felt that a special permit warranted it and it was in the best interest of the town, just to make sure that it didn't come on the backs of other folks. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comment? Okay, so I think what we need to do is, as directed by the board's attorney, first, we're going to, we're going to... first we're gonna, we're gonna vote on requiring, um, High Point to pay for this study and then we will vote to continue the hearing and we're suggesting probably November 14th to give them enough time to, for us to put the scope of the project together, get it into their hands and then have, um, some reasonable time to get some of the, if not all of the analysis done. So I would say, um, I'd like to have two motions on the, uh, the floor. The first one is that, um, that would be requiring High Point to pay for the, uh, cost analysis from RKG. So do I have, do I hear a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And then the next one would be to continue the hearing until November 14th.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is any discussion on the motion? Okay, so November 14th at, um, 7:30 and you can be in contact with both Tammy and we'll be in contact in determining the, uh, actual scope. And, um, you folks know the date and the time, so hope to see you then and I appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Okay, the next hearing is here the petition of, uh, Peter Freeman for Robert Estates LC, LLC, well, his request to allow for the construction of 12 single-family dwellings pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 40B. Subject property is located at 711 Plymouth Street, Middleborough Assessors Act 44, Law 2669, in a residence rural district. Declare the hearing open. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I am Peter Freeman from Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. The partners, the principals of the applicant LLC are here, Tim Haysham and Bill Logan, and they, I believe are familiar to you, they're contractors, local in the area, done a lot of, uh, work in construction and houses in this area. Um, I also want to introduce Jim Pavlik, who is our civil engineer, and also Bill Carlson from Carlson Consulting, who is our traffic consultant. And in a minute I'll pass out, we had mentioned in our cover letter when we applied, we didn't have, we didn't make up copies at the time, I don't believe, of the traffic study, uh, with an update responding to some of your town planners' questions during the project eligibility process. I also want to mention that co-counsel, uh, for myself and for the client and the project is Bob Mather, attorney Bob Mather, uh, and he unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to mention his name and he will likely be here in the future. So let me just, although we will have Bill Carlson present after I present and after Jim Pavlik presents, but I will pass out just so I won't forget, uh, a bunch of these So I know that the board is familiar with 40B. For the benefit of some of the members of the public, I'll just say a few words about it. Uh, what we have done is made a proposal that is a residential 12, single, uh, family, uh, subdivision proposal. We believe the houses are nicely designed to fit in, they're, one of, one design has a farmer's porch with two stories and the other is a fairly typical colonial, fit in with the, with the neighborhood. Uh, the locus is just under five acres, it's four, or four and a half acres, I'm sorry, it's 4.46 acres and Jim will go into those details in more, uh, detailed fashion. Uh, let me just at the outset go through the so-called jurisdictional, uh, requirements of 40B and we cover these in my application. We have in the application, uh, with tabs and the table of contents, all of the components that we believe give you information as supplemented by our presentations tonight and in the future. So for the standing requirements, one is control of the land and we submitted the purchase and sale agreement. Two is that the applicant be a limited dividend organization and under the law and the regulations for 40B, that is achieved by agreeing to sign the regulatory agreement with a subsidizing agency, in this case, Mass Housing, under either their housing starts program or the New England Fund Program. So that's the second prong. And the third prong, prong is that you be eligible, the applicant be eligible for a, uh, subsidy from a state or federal government subsidizing agency for affordable housing and that is achieved under the regulations through a so-called project eligibility letter, which we have for Mass Housing and we included that. It's for the board's, uh, review. If you wanted to ask anything about it naturally, it's part of the application. So that, that covers the three prongs of having so-called standing to be before the zoning board. Uh, the other aspects, I'm gonna kind of gloss over only at the outset. In my experience, it makes sense for both the board and the public to get a feel for the project before going into details of, for example, the waivers. That's one of the things under 40B, which I know the board knows, but for the public, we have the right to ask for waivers from various local regulations, the primary ones being the zoning, uh, uh, requirements and also subdivision rules and regulations, which again, Jim Pavlik will go into, especially the design subdivision rule and regulations aspects. So I don't, as part of my initial presentation, go through the waiver requests. We included it in the application, whether it's tonight or in a future hearing, naturally we'll be ready to go over them and work with you on those. The intent is to basically achieve a well-designed, a safe, from a town viewpoint, um, safety, health and welfare viewpoint, to create what is a subdivision that is more lots than otherwise would be allowed, obviously, but that will provide the town with three new, for new time, new first-time home buyers, three affordable, uh, houses, three out of the 12. So that's basically the gist of the 40B aspect. Uh, we also submitted the typical documents that are signed, will be signed by the applicant and the subsidizing agency, the regulatory agreement, uh, monitoring agreement so that the affordable requirements are, uh, complied with, and the deed rider, which gives both for the buyers, uh, the obligation and also for the town, the knowledge that there will be affordable housing restrictions in perpetuity, uh, each time the house is sold, it will have to be to a qualified buyer who earns no more than 80% of the area median income. So we've provided that information. Uh, we also provided, uh, either by charter in my narrative, the, uh, coverage ratios, which I have it spelled out, uh, Jim can go over it, uh, if necessary again, but in terms of the lot coverage, because, you know, we do think it is, it fits in and it's not overusing the lot by any means, uh, 12 single-family houses have a building coverage of, uh, 18,144 square feet, which is just 9.3% of the site. The driveways and roadways, other impervious area, uh, is, uh, 32,577 square feet, which is just under 17% of the site. So the total impervious is 1.16 acres or 26% of the site. So it's, you know, from a good design and planning viewpoint, it is not, uh, you know, not overdoing it, certainly in our opinion. Uh, so that, in terms of things, and I know that there were points raised by Ruth Jeffries in both the initial letter to Mass Housing and in the report that we've been given by your secretary, thank you for that and, uh, a lot tonight, I hope, but certainly in the future if necessary, uh, Jim and our team will, uh, respond to those concerns and hopefully satisfy you that from the, uh, the viewpoint of what's required for good drainage and for the septic systems and all of that, um, as well as the traffic, as I already mentioned, that it's a well-designed project. So I think I'll stop there with my initial presentation, turn it over to Jim to orient you and perhaps the public to, you know, the actual design aspects and then, uh, then, as I said, excuse me, to, uh, Bill Carlson, uh, and then I'll wrap up and happy to answer questions. Thanks. So, Jim?
Is this mic working? Good evening. I'm Jim Pavlik with Outback Engineering and, uh, I'd like to just give you a brief overview of the, uh, existing site conditions and then describe the project and, um, to start, um, the project is located at 711 Plymouth Street. Um, we're proposing 12 house lots and part of the plan set includes an existing conditions plan that shows the existing topography and, um, the location of the existing house. Um, there's a driveway and a gravel drive. Um, the property is, Mr., uh, Freeman had mentioned is 4.46 acres. There's no wetlands on the site. As far as zoning goes, we're in the, uh, rural residential zoning district. Um, there's no zone two to any public water supply, um, wells in the area. There is the, uh, Water Resource Protection District, Z3 and Z4 line, which is a town, um, zoning designation. Uh, it basically is an area outside of any, again, outside any public water supply areas. It's, uh, the least stringent, um, requirements in that area. The site, uh, we also checked for floodplain issues and natural heritage endangered species. Uh, there were, there were no mapped areas on site for any floodplains or, um, endangered Just to go into a little more detail on the site, the, the front half, if you will, is more or less open. There are some, uh, trees surrounding the existing house and then the back portion of the site, right, right through here is, um, generally wooded. There's existing houses to the, um, east and west and across the street and at the back of the property, um, is a large, uh, extensive property of, uh, cranberry bogs So that's generally the existing conditions. The proposed, the proposed site plan, um, shows a, uh, what we plan to be a private roadway that would be maintained by the homeowners association, that would be created and, um, this plans to install a town water main. And then the drainage system would be, uh, several catch basins at low points in the road, uh, and underground leaching pits. So there would be no, uh, open basins, no, no open drainage basins. The soils we found were, uh, very sandy and very permeable and conducive to this type of a drainage system. And, uh, the house lots generally range from 12,000 square feet in area to, the largest one is a little over 17,000 square feet. And, um, that's, that's the general proposal in a nutshell.
Board, do you have any questions this morning?
Yeah, I noticed there's no lot six or seven. I was just wondering why that is.
Um, they are numbered, uh, we, we put the lot numbers off to the side, they're not actually on the lots, but they're, they are numbered.
Lot seven here, lot six, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions right now? Mark, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may question to Tammy, I believe we submitted not multiple copies but one copy of the drainage report.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that you had that. Um, that's the type of detail of whether it's town staff or consultant or whatever, naturally, um, it, I, I don't think you want him to go through that in great detail. I assume that that will be done with, good, okay. That's, we're in agreement. Uh, the other thing I forgot to mention in terms of the houses, the plans are in there, we didn't make up a board, which I apologize, uh, for the public, if anybody wants an application, uh, they could, you know, get it from the town or contact me. Um, I mentioned briefly the style, which I think is attractive and fits in, but the size, they're three-bedroom houses, all of them, uh, garages will be available if they're, you know, purchased and paid for by, by the buyers. The, uh, the size are also modest, fits in, um, and they're roughly a little over 1,400 to a little over 1,600 square feet. Um, you know, as you know from these developments in the past, sometimes if buyers have some choices that they might want, might want to make, there could be some minor changes in the houses. I'm getting a bit ahead of myself, but, you know, hoping that we work out a permit with you. Um, my, uh, my preferred practice is that we work out with you after you know what our setback waivers, if any, are, um, that we have a building footprint so that you know that the buildings will not exceed the, the setbacks that that footprint would allow. Um, and then perhaps some, either square footage or percentage, uh, increase if, if that happens, decrease or increase. Uh, you know, if we had to come back for every single little minor change, you know, that's okay, but just, again, jumping a bit ahead, but that's what I've done on many other developments that I've worked on. So, um, rather than pursue points like that, I will turn to Bill now. I know that the, the, the main question on the traffic, you probably read the, uh, letter from the planning board and Ruth Jeffries, is simply the location of our driveway to a, the nearby road, Rocky Meadow, is it? Rocky Meadow, so I'll sit down and let Bill take over.
Good evening. For the record, my name is William Carlson of Carlson Consulting Associates. I have over 40 years of experience in transportation planning and traffic engineering. I am a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. At the request of the project proponent, I prepared this document, which I don't know, I believe you have it already, which is a traffic impact assessment dated January 2012. That addressed the impacts of the vehicular traffic that would be generated by, at that time, it was based on a 13-lot subdivision, which has now been reduced to 12 lots. Basically, there'll be very little difference between the impacts of, uh, one reduced lot. First part of the study was due a field review and do the street measurements, collect traffic data, uh, roadway widths, site distances, accident data and so forth. Plymouth Street is two lanes wide, 24 feet, speed limits are posted, uh, posted at 35 miles an hour. An automatic traffic recorder recorded 2,300 vehicles per day and approximately 200 in the peak hour, which is fairly low volumes for a street like Plymouth Street. The next step was to estimate the number of trips that would be generated by the proposed, proposed subdivision. And these were based on Institute of Transportation Engineers trip rates for single-family residences. All in all, the estimate for the AM and PM peak hour is between 10 and 13 vehicles in the peak hour with approximately 104 total vehicle trips per day. The next step was to perform, perform a level of service analysis, which is based on the number of vehicles on the main street versus the number of vehicles that are trying to get in and out of the subdivision road. Because of the low numbers being generated by the subdivision, the, the result was a level of service A indicating very little delay for vehicles pulling out of the subdivision road, which is a safe- road, which is a safe, safety point. Delays will be less than 10 seconds per vehicle. As far as accident data goes, from 2000, 2011, total of three years, the accident data was collected from the police department records, there was only one accident over a three-year period in that, in the vicinity of where the subdivision road is going. So in all, it's fairly safe stretcher roadway. The speeds, the travel speeds were recorded by an automatic traffic recorder. The average travel speeds in both directions was 35 miles an hour, which is the posted speed limit. The 85th percentile speed was just over 40 miles an hour. And the report concluded that the vehicle trips, which is five to eight vehicles exiting the site during the peak hours, would have very little, if any noticeable, impact on traffic on Plymouth Street. Safety, one accident, three years, it's a safety area. So the conclusion was the traffic generated by the subdivision will have minimal impact on the roadway. Since that time, I received a copy of a memo from the planning director, Ruth Jeffry, and some questions were raised after she visited the site. One was the separation of a subdivision road from Rocky Meadow Road. The town's subdivision rules and regulations would like a 500-foot offset. Where a vehicle would be coming out of Rocky Meadow Road, from that point at the stop sign to our site driveway, our subdivision road would be 135 feet. Where that 500-foot offset came from in the town's subdivision rules, I do not know. And I did some research, and I believe it's in a memo that you have before you or will be handed out to you tonight. I looked at various other municipalities. And as far as minimum offsets from side streets, I will list Town of Bridgewater, 125-feet regulation, Randolph, 125 feet, Rockland, 125 feet. All these are listed in the memorandum. Sandwich, Town of Sandwich down the Cape, 125 feet. Several towns have 150 feet and some, a few have 200 feet. I have no idea where the 500-foot regulation came from, from Middleborough. I researched Mass DOT Design Manual, and there are no requirements or recommendations for offsets for subdivision roads. And actually, there's a quote in the DOT manual that states access management for minor roadways or town roadways is infrequently applied to local streets. With that, I researched further the Institute of Transportation Engineers as a subdivision rules and regulations guidelines. The ITE regulations recommend 125-foot minimum between street offsets. And let me point out, street offsets basically came along as a safety issue, meaning because they were opposite each other. And if they're very close to each other, people cut the corners and zip diagonally across the street. There aren't too many rules that I could find that apply to same-side offsets for side streets. I talked to Mass DOT District Traffic Engineer and District Project Engineers, and they told me that they don't believe they have any requirements for this also. In the planning director's memo, there was a statement stating Mass Highway requires 350 feet. I have not found this requirement in any of my research. ASHTO, American Association for State Highway and Transportation Engineers, I researched that manual and found no requirements for offsets of side streets. And you have to remember, we have 135 feet from where a vehicle would stop on Rocky Meadow Street to where a car would be positioned coming out of the subdivision roadway. Those vehicles can see each other, and they really will not interfere with each other. The site distance along there is more than adequate for the average travel speeds, and I believe there is no safety issue posed by the 135-foot separation of the two roadways. Thank you.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions at this point?
The pavement on this street is only 22 feet. Why can't that be 24 feet?
On which street?
How do you pronounce that? Lousy lane?
Oh, the subdivision roadway. I will defer that to Jim Pavlik.
We've got some town subdivision requirements for a lane of 12.4. So it's a 22-foot wide. Hey, good. Keep that.
Okay. Anybody else have a question?
Yes. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Or to Joe.
Oh, Joe.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
To you, sir. The end of Rocky Meadow Street, is that just a straight-through street there? Is there a stop sign?
There is a stop sign at its intersection.
Okay. And, all right. I guess that's, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple introductory comments. The board will remember, as I know it will, the Rocky Gutter project from the year 2000. The two substantive issues that the board's still litigating in that case are present here. I think the board needs to have this discussion with the applicant and Attorney Freeman to at least either attempt to work this out or figure out where this is going to go. And those two issues are this. The board is being asked to endorse a definitive plan. The board has raised the issue of its lack of authority to endorse a definitive plan pursuant to the subdivision control law. That issue has been litigated now for, we're going on 13 years. And the second issue, which maybe have been resolved, and maybe I misunderstood either Attorney Freeman or Mr. Pavlik, which is the board in the Haskins Way case, which is still being litigated, raised the issue as to whether 40B allows the conveyance of lots as opposed to the conveyance of a structure. Now, if the applicant is proposing a package such that a qualified buyer buys a lot and a structure on it, that would resolve this issue. But I'm not sure if I heard Attorney Freeman correctly. Peter didn't know I was going to ask that question, so maybe if we could ask him, Mr. Chairman, to address that. But the issue that the board has raised repeatedly in the Rocky Gutter case and Haskins Way is, at least the board's position has been to the Housing Appeals Committee and in Superior Court, that Chapter 40B was designed, at least ostensibly, to promote the construction of new housing, not the sale of individual lots. So with those two introductory comments, Mr. Chairman, I'll get from Tammy. I haven't reviewed the purchase and sale agreement. I have seen the project eligibility letter, but just, we can raise these issues at the next hearing and discuss them further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Witten. And on the second question to respond first, no intention not to build the houses and sell the package. I, I don't know of any decided court case on this question. I don't really need to belabor it because we're not going to do that. I've discussed it with Mass Housing, for example, and they have said that if the same restrictions and profit limitation are in place, then they, and this is all verbal, that they didn't see why it couldn't happen if the same controls were there. But it, it's a moot point. I mean, certainly our intention is to build the houses and sell. If for some reason that changed, we'd have to come back and get first the subsidizing agency and then you folks. So I'm interested to know about that case. I'll be following it. The, the other question, I actually have litigated this, and I don't mean to, to say my opinion is the last word. We hope to have a good back and forth and a, a good process with you folks and with Attorney Witten, whom I know and respect. I believe that there is case law that says that the zoning board absolutely does stand in the shoes of the planning board and has the authority under 40B to endorse the subdivision plan. There's case law from the SJC, so I don't want to make anything contentious or an issue. I can address that with John and/or Chairman or anybody else outside or in between hearings. And if you'd like a memo on it, I could, I could put something together. So that's, that's basically, you know, my view on it, just so you know. So, you know, hopefully we could proceed with kind of the details of the merits, whether you have consultant review or anything like that, you know, and keep moving. And again, if that's a concern that counsel and therefore the board has, I can certainly work with you all on that. So that, other than any other questions, I know you want to let the public comment, but that would wrap up our initial presentation and... Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might. I know Attorney Witten said he hadn't had a chance to review the purchase and sale, but I just took a quick glance through it and saw that the purchase price for the property was a dollar. That's pretty good.
Yes, they are related parties, and that's covered by the regulations. So, you know, it is a different entity of the related parties. That doesn't affect a pro forma or anything because under the regulations, there's been an appraisal that establishes what the asset right value for the property is. So, you know, I'm glad you read it. In case anybody read only the front part, not the addendum, the first date for the closing was July 31st or something, but there's an automatic one-year extension if we didn't achieve our permits yet, so we still have plenty of time, you know, to, during which the purchase and sale is still valid.
I also, I appreciate you saying that it has no effect on the pro forma. Did you supply a pro forma with this package? I didn't see it in the index tabs.
No, we haven't submitted it, certainly not hiding anything, but under the regulations, based on case law and regulation changes, that it is not required to submit a pro forma and the zoning board, and I'm quoting the regulations, again, we'll, we'll share everything with you frankly. The way the regulations now dictate, it says that you don't submit a pro forma with the application, that the zoning board should first go through the application on the merit, so to speak, although if you have big concerns about anything, you know, sure, we'd like to know right off the bat, but that you go through whatever your concerns are based on the local concerns under your bylaws and the health, safety, and welfare aspects. And if there's something that you think needs to be changed by way of a condition, be it a reduction or some other condition, you have to tell us what that condition is. And again, I don't expect you to do that tonight. Again, if our concerns, the earlier the better that we find out. But once you tell us what you believe you would impose based on your safety, local concerns, then we have a chance to respond. And if we feel as though we cannot accede to what you request because it would make the project, quote unquote, "uneconomic," which is a legal term I'm sure you're familiar with under the statute, then at that point you have the right to ask for a pro forma and even to have it peer-reviewed at the applicant's expense if you felt that was necessary. So that's the only reason I didn't do it. We're hoping that we can work out things with you and, you know, that that wouldn't even be an issue. But certainly, you know, it was submitted to Mass Housing, it's routine. I've done, oh, well over 100 of these, and so, you know, it's not anything we're trying to hide.
Would you, would you be willing just to submit it?
The short answer is, I think so. You know, I mean, I can ask my client, but it's...
Come on, you're an attorney.
That's right.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't hold up in court. Yes or no? Would you just support, would you submit the pro forma?
Unless my client tells me no, unless my client tells me no publicly. Again, I have no problem with it.
All right.
I, you know, I, I just wanted to let both you and the public know how, how the regulations work.
Could, did, could we fit one more house on that project?
I don't know. I guess I would...
Well, that's to your, your...
Might you have my client?
Stand up the microphone. Could you fit one more home?
There's any number of things we could do to fit in more houses. We thought this was a good balance of, based on the site configuration, the roadway layout. But if you wanted to suggest that we include additional houses, I guess we'd have to consider that.
Well, my, my point is this. We have several 40Bs in town whereby the developers come in and their average lot size is in and around the 30,000 square feet. And I'm not sure what your direct average is or if it's listed on the plan, but I, I don't think that you could put too many more homes in there safely, in any way, shape, or form. So it looks to me like a typical, typical 40B, put as many as you can in the least amount of space, and let's run with it. That's what it looks like to me. So, and then I would have another point. So your application was for 80% of median income?
Correct.
We've had developers offer to go in at 70, and your offer of three affordable homes, we've had developers to, instead of just meeting the 25%, have done 30% routinely. So not that I'm asking you to definitively give me an answer, but affordable housing today is really taking on a life of its own in terms of its true affordability. So the 70% of the median income seems to lower the bar enough where more people are interested in qualified and probably more appropriate to the people that are truly in need. And then the percentage of affordable units and actually where they lay out, I don't know if you did that, Jim, which ones are actually the affordable units at this point, how you mix them in. But so I would just think you should think about that.
Sure, we, we certainly can. Just a quick response, and it's not an off-the-cuff response because I've done so many of these. In fact, I recall another project, I don't think it went forward, but in Middleborough a number of years ago, where you asked for the 30%. First of all, on where the affordable houses are located, I don't believe we designated them yet. On a development like this, naturally, they would be random. You know, they're not going to be lumped together or anything like that. There's not going to be any distinguishable differences. Those are all part of the state guidelines anyway, and Mass Housing, the subsidizing agency, you know, basically will ensure that. So I'm sure that wouldn't be any problem. I don't mind, you know, showing that to you as we move along. As to 70%, actually, it really serves the purpose that you just expressed, which I understand based on the way the formulas are done now by the state agencies and the way we calculate the affordable price. We still want the eligible applicants to be earning up to 80%, and that in fact means more people would be eligible. But the price is in fact, you hit the nail on the head, the price is calculated so that someone earning over, earning 70% or less, not 80%, earning 70% or less of the area median income can afford that house based on paying no more than 30% of their income towards the housing, the housing expenses, meaning principal and interest, any homeowner association fee, taxes, and insurance. So, you know, that, that's basically already addressed. And as to having what would I believe, you know, result in one more, one more affordable unit, you know, in the same spirit of being cooperative and trying to work with you, I'm sure we don't have an answer yet, but as you said, we'll think about it, and yes, we'll think about it. Anybody else have a...
The fire department looked at this road, for their consideration.
Jim, if you want to... I don't know if they did yet, but I believe it complies with the subdivision requirements.
I know where you're going with that, Mr. Diagley. And this plan was laid out back probably in 2012 before the fire department came up with the new ladder truck, if that's what you're referring to.
That's why I mentioned that.
Right. So that cul-de-sac complies with the current subdivision regulations, and I'm not aware that it's been changed to reflect, that the subdivision regs have been changed to reflect the new ladder truck. But that's a discussion we can have with the fire department.
Thank you.
Through you to the applicant, is it your contention that this is going to remain a private street?
Yes, that's our intention, and I mean, if the...
To that end, I guess my question would be, what are you going to do for trash pickup because the town won't service a private road?
You guys have an answer?
No.
I mean, what, what, in other, you know, modest developments, if you will, like this in other towns that I've worked in, it's certainly the homeowners have the responsibility for their own private, you know, private pickup.
Okay. Well, I just, I didn't see a, you know, a place for a dumpster or a common, you're going to have to haul it to someplace.
Yeah, I don't think our intent was to have something common because they are pretty traditional, you know, not...
It's going to be a homeowners' association, and you're going to have to deal with some of those issues as far as street maintenance for plowing.
Oh, I agree. Absolutely, and we will have a homeowners' association. That's fine. You know, that would be our intent. And in terms of a dumpster, though, we just didn't think that it was necessary for common. Again, those are details of...
Just something I'm bringing up at this point.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. That's exactly what we, what we hoped for. That's exactly what we, what we hoped for.
Um, and Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know if this is, you know, just based at the introductory meeting, but, you know, I'd be interested to know, um, in terms of the peer reviews that we might be looking at, um, and again, we don't necessarily have to do it this evening, but as we go, uh, it might be, uh, well to identify the peer reviews that we're interested in, uh, having done as we move forward with this.
Yes.
And then, the other thing is, if, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is just tell you of the number of letters that I have, the date and who they're from, because I believe the petitioner, the applicant, has a copy of all of these letters.
From step town staff, yes.
Yeah.
Twenty seven.
And rather than read each one in, if it's okay with you, um, so, the, uh, the first one, uh, is date stamped, uh, September 25th, and it's from the planning board, from, uh, Michael Labonte. Oh, no, and then there's two more pages from Ruth dated January 15th, 2013, which is an attachment to that letter, okay? And a late arrival, which you, you don't have a copy of this, I suppose, no?
Probably not.
You don't?
I...
Okay, um, so, that one I'll read in, and then we'll get you a copy. So, the next one is dated September 25th from Bob Whalen, our, uh, building commissioner, which I believe you have.
Yes.
Um, he wrote it on September 24th. Then we have one from our town health department, uh, from Gene Spalding, date stamped September 24th, 2013, written on the same day. And then lastly, um, we have one date stamped September 21st, 2013, from, uh, Joseph Silva, from our Middleborough Water Department. Um, so, if you agree that you have each one of those copies, uh, I'm just going to take a minute and read this one in, and then we'll give copies to, uh, them.
I don't think I have the water department letter.
Okay.
Do you have an extra, or do you guys need tomorrow?
You could take this.
That's the one I would have worn, it's only like a few lines.
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is from the Department of Public Works, um, Chris Peck, dated September 26th, 2013, subject to Louis Estates Comprehensive Permit Application DPW Review. Dear Board Members, at your request, I have reviewed the comprehensive permit application on behalf of the Department of Public Works. As part of the package we, uh, we received the following. Comprehensive permit application for Louis Estates 711 Plymouth Street, Middleborough, Mass 02346, prepared by Freeman Law Group LLC, dated August 20th, 2013. Plans labeled comprehensive permit plan for Louis, uh, Estates, Middleborough, Mass, prepared by Outback Engineering, Inc., dated November 26th, 2012, revised June 6th, 2013. The purpose of this letter is to make the board aware of any concerns or comments that the Department of Public Works has with the proposed Louis Estates Comprehensive Permit Plan and application. The following is a list of the department's comments and concerns. One, it appears based on the permit application that the applicant has requested waivers from local bylaws, planning board rules and regulations, in parentheses, with the exception of municipal water system requirements, and may not be required to provide mitigation due to the impact of the project on surrounding roadways and properties. However, the location of the proposed roadway is approximately 140 feet from the intersection of Plymouth Street and Rocky Meadow Street. This intersection, intersection as it exists, has limited site distance for vehicles entering and exiting Rocky Meadow Street, as well as for those traveling west on Plymouth Street. The additional vehicles pulling out of the proposed roadway in the vicinity of this intersection may lead to additional vehicle conflicts and possible collisions. In the past, the DPW had proposed realigning the intersection by creating a T-intersection at Rocky Meadow Street. This realignment would pull the intersection further away from the proposed roadway, creating a safer intersection for those using Plymouth Street, Rocky Meadow Street, and the proposed roadway, Louis Lane. Again, it is my recommendation that this intersection realignment be completed as part of this proposed project, as the proposed roadway will have a detrimental impact on existing, on the existing intersection. Two, the table of contents of the comprehensive permit application states that a preliminary drainage report was submitted "under separate cover," in quotation marks. However, we have not received this document. We would like to review the drainage design in the event for the future of residents of the roadway applied, to have the road accepted at town meeting. Three, the applicant has completed test pits in the areas of proposed drainage infiltration areas. We request that the soil data be provided for review. Four, there are two drainage pipes of no, unknown size running from Catch Basin Number Three to the proposed infiltration basin located in the cul-de-sac. One pipe enters into the water quality inlet and the other directly to the infiltration basin itself. We are unclear if the pipe running directly to the infiltration basin is designed to be an overflow. This comment applies to both Catch Basin 1A, 1B, and the drain manhole at the head of the cul-de-sac. Please call, uh, clarify. And lastly, number five, the applicant will be required to apply for trench permits, road opening permits, and curb cut permit. Very truly yours, Christopher Peck.
If I may, through the chair, either ask the chair, do you, are you going to...
No, I, um, I think that's it.
I'm sorry.
I think that's it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, sorry. Um, I have an extra copy, it's actually probably my copy, but I can get another one. Do you want me to give it to you for the DPW, or will you send it through you, or is someone, someone still here? Someone still here? Okay, there you go.
I have only one thing, not having read any of this, but one thing, we will need a check from you, you know, the developer, for $15,000 to start peer review when we get to that point, and it may go up. That's the starting point.
Uh, well, I had mentioned in my cover letter that the only reason we didn't submit a check...
When you get to...
Yeah, we, well, depending on which peer reviews you have and what they propose, you know, certainly, we will have to pay whatever is reasonable and what you expect, but it, but it, it just seems to me as though it wouldn't be a lengthy discussion, and if you were not, if you don't have it tonight, the discussion, that's fine, but it would seem to me as though it doesn't have to be that much on a project this size. Um, I've done a lot of developments and certainly engineering peer review, uh, even if there's traffic. To me, in my experience, just, my experience is a few thousand dollars. So, again, uh, you know, if you're, if you're asking us to send it immediately, I would want to discuss it with you. If you're saying, let's hold off until you actually choose peer review, although we would like to get going on it, you know, if you want to discuss it tonight, we'd love to. Um, I, I just wanted to tell you candidly, uh, that's our thought on that.
Well, all I can tell you is that's the amount that we would start with, the return that we don't use.
Understood.
So, the quicker you get it in, the quicker we can start peer review, and not be held up by.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to give us less, we use it, we reach the point of, we used it all.
We have a policy that apply the board.
Okay.
Is it 15,000 or is it 20,000? I mean, that guy...
Fifteen is the one, remember.
And that's what the board, the doctor, the policy...
It's your board's policy. Maybe just to, um, to make it easier, if the board, in the past, the board has used Amory Engineers, I, I don't know, is that still the engineering firm you're using? The board could clarify right now with Attorney Freeman, the board's decision to use the engineering firm that you choose to use. There's certainly no conflict of interest, and Amory is qualified, those are the only two grounds for any opposition. Uh, and then the board could establish the, the fund requirement, and that fund requirement at this point would be used for Amory Engineers, a, as the chairman said, correctly, of course, if any funds are not used, they're obviously returned by the town treasurer to the applicant. But as Attorney Freeman well knows, if the funds aren't produced promptly, uh, the board can't engage Amory Engineers, so it certainly doesn't benefit the applicant, uh, to not move forward. So, so maybe if the, if the board is comfortable, um, choose the, uh, engineering firm that you would like, have Attorney Freeman agree with that, which I suspect he will, uh, and then the board can make the $15,000 requirement.
Well, we've always used Amory, that's what we would use, we would, because we have confidence in it. But we're not going to do anything until we get money, and it's the board's policy to have $15,000. It's not our fault, because we've got a smaller compared to a bigger one. That's your problem, and it's not our problem.
I understand, we can make it bigger if you like. I know.
You don't have, you don't have anything...
Forgive me, I try to, I try to be, you know, lighthearted, um, and I appreciate that, I respect that. As I say, I deal with a lot of, you know, a lot of boards, and, uh, I hope you also would agree it was reasonable for me to, to raise the question. I'm not going to pick a fight by any means. Um, so, uh, in, in Amory, I just checked as to the conflict, there's certainly no issue on competency, so, no problem whatsoever with, with Amory. Um, we'd like you to go ahead and do it, and, you know, the only thing, having consulted with my client, is, um, not meaning to break up how much money is started, but I can't imagine they wouldn't be, you know, satisfied to start with 7,500 with my client's commitment to pay the full 15 as soon as he can.
But our policy is 15,000.
So, I guess...
I'm not going to revise that.
I guess the direct question is, you can't do the contract with Amory until you have 15? When you, just so I'll know, when you get 15, would you, would you then retain, uh, uh, Amory and whenever they can do it? Yep, okay. I mean, in other words, it wouldn't have to wait till another hearing for us to discuss it, you would get it underway once you get the 15.
But it's not just for Amory.
Uh-huh. Oh, no, I realize, but they're the first one that you mentioned, or Mr. Witten mentioned.
Well, it's just because we mentioned it, that's the only reason.
Yeah.
And we also have to pay John.
Uh, well, again, my, my client's entitled to know that. Under the 40B regulations and the Supreme Judicial Court case, we don't have to pay the attorneys.
Well, you don't have to pay anybody if you don't want them.
No, well, you do, no, well, no, under the 40, uh, what, what's fair is fair, under the regulations and the case law, we do have to pay peer review. We're not having any issue whatsoever. We're paying for engine, for engineering peer review. But for attorneys, which is different than engineering or traffic peer review, I, I, again, I, I'm not one here, one to come here to raise problems, the last thing I want to do is to have, you know, any unhappiness on your part, but I do think I'm entitled to tell you and all of the members what the law is, as well as the public, and I happen to be fresh off a victory in the Supreme Judicial Court, where it wasn't Mr. Witten, it wasn't your town, it was another town, but the SJC, the Supreme Judicial Court, ruled in the case of Sunderland Zoning Board versus Housing Appeals Committee and Sugar Bush Meadows LLC, that the state regulations that say unless there's some really unusual, uh, not common legal question, in which case, yes, you could ask an applicant to pay for your counsel, routine things, which is pretty much what this is, the SJC said, no, that's not supposed to happen. So, I just think it's fair for you to be informed of that, and hopefully you would respond in kind.
May I tell you that any 40B is not routine? They're all standing to go down on their own merits.
That's true.
It's not going to be such a 40B.
That's true, but I'm using the word from the case law, from what the Supreme Judicial Court said in terms of distinctions as to the things that a town attorney or zoning board and special counsel could be asked. Um, you know, we don't have to debate it ad infinitum, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm upfront, I know the law, and I wanted to share it with you. You know, I'm not expecting you to change the amount, you know, so, you're, you're firm about the 15, and that's your policy, and we respect that, you know, we can, I guess leave to another day what happens on the question we just discussed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With regard to Amory, my recommendation to the board would be to obtain Attorney Freeman's assent to retain Amory for the traditional engineering scope of work. Once the check has been received by the treasurer and cleared, then Amory will be ready and on board, and Amory, as everybody in the board knows, is very prompt and efficient. So, that's that issue. With regard to the legal fees, um, I disagree with Attorney Freeman on a lot of areas, uh, most notably his earlier comments about the, the board's ability to endorse the definitive plan, but I don't disagree with him as to what the SJC did say on the garden ride and use of town council fees. Having said that, the board has every right to ask to have your legal fees paid for, and the applicant either says yes or no, let's move on. If the applicant says yes, then it's a contract, if the applicant says no, then the applicant says no. Um, so, we don't want to litigate that case for that matter again, um, but this is a choice that any applicant can pay regardless of what the SJC says. In fact, the SJC clearly did not say that an applicant could not voluntarily pay the town's attorney fees. What the SJC simply said was, in the traditional 40B review, non-complex title matters, non-complex other matters, that the board can't require town council or special council fees to be paid. So, the applicant, I think, has a choice, and the applicant makes that choice, and then we move on. But I think with regard to Amory, that can be wrapped up, um, quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In response to that question, yes, we do agree, on behalf of the applicant, we do agree, you know, go ahead with, with, with Amory. Uh, and the summary that Mr. Witten just gave as to the SJC holding that I cited, I do agree with that. What I would suggest is, we don't have to decide tonight, I will discuss it with my client, it may well be, because again, we, we, we want to have a good relationship, I mean that sincerely. So, you know, I, I, I don't know what my client's answer is, but I have no problem discussing the fact that we could say, yes, voluntarily, a certain amount, perhaps we put some limit on it, but that, yes, a, a certain amount, we would agree, could go towards your council fees. So, you know, I'm satisfied to leave it at that, you can start the Amory, when you get the 15,000, you can start the Amory, and we would come back to you with a specific proposal if we do so, as to, yes, we agree to X dollars towards your attorney's fees.
It's a board stock at this point. You want to move forward with the, uh, with Amory, give a check for $15,000, and move forward with Amory to check out what's going on, as far as the design is, and leave the rest of it open at the present time? So, move.
Well, for me, um, just as one member, um, yes, I want Amory assigned, yes, I'd like the $15,000 check, and yes, I would like consideration for having John Witten represent this 40B like he has every other single 40B since I've been here in 2000. So, um, I would strongly urge you to do as you just said, consider it and, um, do what you do, but as far as I'm concerned, it's a total package. Um, and I don't want to litigate it tonight either, it already has been, but clearly, the practice of the board, and to be consistent with past practices, we have employed a number of peer reviews in attorneys, in attorney firm, and have done since 2000, and I don't see why we would change this one or the next one, regardless of what the SJC said. It's just my thought.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have, would just like a small clarification. We are really not going to discuss any concerns about the plan tonight.
Right.
All right. This, and you got concerns, you can say it. We're not going to discuss it this second.
Anybody else? And the only thing I can say is, if the attorney fee is not covered, then it's coming out of the town's attorney's fee.
Understood.
And if the town's attorneys, that ledger item, doesn't have enough money, then there isn't any attorney fee until a town meeting corrects it, if it does correct. That's all I have to say about it.
Yeah, we would like to move forward, and I don't want any member of the board, I don't want to foresee to have a vote on the comment that Mr. Priestley made. You know, I checked with my client, and, you know, we already said we'd get you that money, and we would agree to have the amount of up to $3,000 allocated towards attorney's fees, your attorney's fees. Again, everything will be addressed, as you said, it depends on what the review of the, uh, by the, by Amory, um, comes in at, so, it's still, you know, an ongoing discussion, but, you know, as I said, we wanted to respond in good faith and be cooperative, and, you know, that's, that's our response, which I think really, uh, is appropriate under the circumstances.
Anybody have any further comments?
Just one quick question.
Okay, question?
Um, this came to us as Roberts Estates. The road is Louisa Lane. I have now heard this thing discussed as Louisa Estates and Roberts. So, is it because you've already incorporated that you can't change the Roberts?
Oh, no, we could change anything, and I apologize for any confusion. First, the LL... First, the LLC is Robert Estates, that doesn't have to change. The name, is it Louise, I believe? Louise Estates and Louise Road. If this is another project, I'm thinking, oh, forgive me, was that changed because the town asked of it? Because of another, yeah, the town actually asked, asked that we change because of a name confusion.
The planning board prefers, Middleborough prefers, that the estate names and the road names be the same.
Right.
And there is another housing development apparently that has a similar name in town already to Roberts.
Right. That's what we thought, so that's the reason for the change.
All right.
Yeah.
I just want to be sure because the paperwork is coming in under two different things, so...
I noted that, I thought I got it correct, that the applicant actually is Robert Estates, but the development in the street is Louise.
Any other member of the board, any questions at this point? Okay, then I turn to the audience.
Sure.
Who, is there somebody who would like to say thing, either affirmative, negative, or just a question? Chief.
I would, Mr. Attwood, Bush Gates, Chief of Police. This was brought to my attention today and I went down, I looked at it. I'm not here to stop anybody's development or infringe on it, but I did have some concerns about the traffic. Vehicles that travel west on Plymouth Street, the elevation where the entrance to this subdivision is, if vehicles are traveling in a westerly direction, they're coming up, they're coming up a hill and depending on the vehicle that's being operated and depending on the vehicle that's coming out of the subdivision, that could be an issue, especially if somebody's a little bit over the speed limit. So, that's my concern.
Is this road at the top of the hill?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay.
No, I agree with his concerns. I'm just not sure if what the DPW suggested is lengthening, making that into a T would solve some of those issues, which would lengthen your line of sight. I'm not sure.
I think, I'm right, I'm going to say it. I don't drive thirty-five miles an hour on that road. And very few of the cars that I ever meet on that road are going thirty-five miles an hour. And you are coming around a curve, there's a dip, there's a, there was a tree, there may be a stump of a tree that was right where Rocky Meadow goes off, and coming back, it can be very interesting, coming back towards Middleborough. So, when you gave your traffic and said, "Traffic thing says everybody goes thirty-five miles an hour," I'm going, no, they don't, because I know from my own experience, people do not drive thirty-five miles an hour on Plymouth Street. And I, it's a concern.
Well, that's my concern. And my main concern is just the vehicle traffic going west on Plymouth Street, coming up that hill, because it is a, the elevation's quite, quite a bit and it depends on the type of, I mean, if you're driving a tractor trailer, then, yeah, you've got a good sightline, but if you're in a sports car, it's going a little quick, it's not going to be so good.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
We have something, Rod, and I live in seven oh five Plymouth Street, which is right next to this development. We just moved in six months ago, months ago, so you can understand we're a little surprised that this is being discussed. Houses in this area typically have about, an unprofessional guess would be about acre, pretty spread out. So, a concern that we have is, what will a heavily dense development, how will that affect surrounding house values and property values? To reiterate this horrible intersection, it is horrible. Our driveway, it's not on the plans right there, but I can tell you it takes way longer than ten seconds to pull out of my driveway. There's three blind spots, two on the east right there from Rocky Meadow and the Plymouth Street coming up over that hill. And then right past our driveway going west is a slight bend in the street and there's hedges that are probably twenty feet tall that are very difficult to look over. So, if we have trouble pulling out of our driveway, I can understand a development having issues as well. As well as right after we moved in in March, there was a horrible car accident right there on Rocky Meadow. A woman lost control of her car. She had three small kids in the car. They hit a tree, it made the news and everything. So, within six months that happened, or within a week after us moving in. And then another concern that, or question really, we just kind of want to understand is, right now, there's a lot of trees between our property and the property that they're proposing to build on. So, we're just wondering what they plan to do with those privacy trees? What, are they going to tear them down? Just really kind of want to know what will affect our house. So, that's it.
Welcome to Middleborough.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Which side of the property is her house located on?
The west side, sorry.
West side, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Rod Kraus, Kraus &amp; Hummel, Plymouth, Massachusetts, and through you to the board. I'm here on behalf of Jean Freitas, who lives at three Rocky Meadow Street. I think you probably all know her, she's been there for, I won't say a million years, I'll say fifty years. Okay, fifty years. I'm not going to get in the middle of Attorney Witten and Attorney Freeman, that sounds like a rock fight to be had at a later time and a later date with respect to the definitive subdivision plan or other matters, but I'm here tonight on behalf of Mrs. Freitas and her family to discuss her property and if I might... Mr. Chairman, through you to the board, that's Mrs. Freitas's property right here. Now, you know, we heard the chief, he's not here, and the planning department and the engineering departments, we reiterate all those concerns. A very large concern for my client, and I'll hand these up to the board and I'll give, I'll give...
Attorney Freeman, he's up. You're welcome.
Is the flooding that occurs on Mrs. Freitas's property. All you have to do is look at the grades. Now, I heard the engineer indicating that the soils absorb the water, the runoff. Unfortunately, that's not been our experience. And even though those are anecdotal photographs, there's sufficient evidence and data to suggest that where it goes from high down to low and it puddles right here. And I would ask on behalf of my client and to you, Mr. Chairman, that in any studies done by the engineers, that they contemplate or understand that we're having flooding issues and we are down gradient, down gradient of this entire site. And, because you can see it very easily. Particularly, and I won't make fun of the numbers of houses on these ten thousand square foot lots, but there's going to be a lot more impervious material added. I have no idea what the drainage is from the roof collection systems or how that works. And in fact, you can see from, this is the tree line. No trees, tree line. So, we're going to take out a lot of absorbent vegetation and create impervious material, impervious material on the site, which could have an even more deleterious effect on Mrs. Freitas's house. And as you well know, and we've been talking about the law tonight, whatever runoff they have has to be captured on their site and Mrs. Freitas does not have to be burdened by that nuisance or trespass of that water. The other significant issue, and you've heard about it, is the road intersections here. Mrs. Freitas's driveway is up here. You know this better than me. This is a multi-use area because you've got the bogs and the construction. So, not only do you have a combination of commuter vehicles, regular cars, but you have tractor trailers running this road and they are not going to go thirty-five miles an hour. They don't go thirty-five miles an hour. And the site distances, I wouldn't argue with Ruth Jeffries about this, I suggest if you have a question about the site distance, because it's not an ITSE or whatever the engineering standard you're going to use is, is that have her further explain. But I suggest to you that the hundred and some foot site distances because of the curvature and because of the hills is an inappropriate standard. Let me hand you one more, because it tends to make this a lot more obvious, is the topography right in the area. You all know what the topography, you live here, you travel the road, but you're going to see that there are hills everywhere leading to this basin and Mrs. Freitas is in a little basin here. And she's the bottom of those, not only for water flow, but for the traffic patterns that establish and collect in this, in this area. And I would suggest that a peer review would be necessary to determine the safety, particularly as you heard from that young lady who just moved into Middleborough, but also from the experience of others, including Mrs. Freitas, that this, this is a dangerous intersection. And your planning department would not be suggesting or recommending a T unless they thought that it was necessary. I don't think it's, I don't think it's abusive to ask for that. I think it's sensible to address the traffic patterns that are going to start here and here and the other traffics that's coming along this area. So, those are our two principal concerns. And again, this is a preliminary meeting tonight, we understand it's a, it's a point of collection and we haven't had an opportunity to review the traffic conditions or the traffic study that was provided, but we suggest that at a minimum, there'd be a peer review for the hydrology here and for the drainage and for the traffic to determine what is in fact safe for the people living in the area presently and if granted, what would be the concern safety-wise for the residents that would be added to Middleborough if you allow the project to go forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I don't have a question, but I think it's important to point out that my name is Joe Freitas and to the best of my knowledge, I am not related in any way to Jean M. Freitas and that's important as far as this board goes, so, thank you.
You may go back to Mayflower. Mayflower. I'm taking it way back.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I came for High Point tonight and I just decided I'd stay and listen. So, maybe I just don't know the dance that usually happens here around fortyBs, but I heard about how people wanted to work together and all I heard was objections to the things that you wanted to have happen. The fifteen thousand dollars, the, Ruth says it should be five hundred feet from the intersection. Well, we don't believe that that's the case. There's only one accident in the area, but I didn't hear any numbers on what are the accident rates in the towns where it was, a hundred. And clearly, we've put bylaws and regulations in place to protect the community and protect the new residents that are going to be moving into the community. So, you know, we heard about how we're going to help more people to be, have affordable housing, that the houses would be of a similar nature to those that are already in the community, but the density of this project is clearly much denser than those. So, I know when you're talking about a development, you're making money and it's not, and we want people to make money and that's the American way. But what's the benefit to the common good of those people that are around the area? And I didn't hear any mention of that at all tonight.
Thank you. The only thing I can tell you is that a forty-B is a development. It's hard to find the benefits of it, except maybe for the people that may move in that can't afford a normal house and pay that much. Therefore, we can reduce it and make, through the developer to make it, so they can move into a home. It's a creature of the Commonwealth and doesn't, sometimes turns out well and sometimes does not turn out as well, depending on this board and depending on the developer and what they propose and what we accept or dispose of. And it's, it's very difficult to come up to get everybody to agree on everything, to try your best. And that doesn't mean that they can't appeal it to the appeals board, which you know the rules.
Again, I've seen you folks do outstanding work over time. I guess I was just talking to the demeanor of what I was hearing tonight. It was referenced that nobody's ever questioned the amount of money and how it's been spent and you guys, I've always observed over the years, spend the town's money and the applicant's money like you'd spend your own judiciously. And so, I guess, again, it just sounded adversarial to me from the beginning.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak pro or form or far or against as a question on this particular development right now? I would like to hope that the rest of this continues the same way, but I don't think it will. Because I've never seen one that continues as a real friendly forty-B and it can be from the board, it can be from the neighbors, it can be from anybody, no matter how much you try. We try to come up with something, but it probably doesn't appease everybody. Go ahead.
No, if that's it, you know, I don't know why, by the way, I don't know the gentleman or minister, perhaps town minister, he performs, former selectman. I don't want to take issue with what he said, I don't believe I came across that way, I believe much more in the spirit of what Mr. Attwood just said. Our intent is to try to be as cooperative as we can be. I did raise some questions based on my knowledge of the law, but we discussed that and worked them out amicably with Mr. Witten. So, enough said, I don't, again, I'm not defending what I did if I came across in any way adversarial, I apologize, that's the last thing I intended to want it to be. We certainly want to continue to work with you on all these things and I thought I said we would. Thanks.
John, do you have any further comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think I will, I will contact Amory.
Thank you.
Once the check is in and set Patrick up and he knows Jim and Jim and Patrick can share the materials and ask him to have a report prior to the board's next meeting. No, I think that's enough for now.
Okay. Yes.
Just on that note, because I know part of, at least, pre and post runoff water analysis has to be done. And so, I guess for the abutter, the issue is that based on the development, we can't take an already bad situation and make it any way worse.
So, what I would say is, not only must the applicant comport with the DEP stormwater regulations, which is no runoff to abutting property, the applicant has an opportunity through the board's powers to make it better. So, it's not good enough, in my opinion, I think the board's opinion for past practice, to say we're not making it worse. The board's obligation is to protect the neighborhood and the applicant has an opportunity and I think an obligation through the board to make it better. So, if the abutter is receiving stormwater runoff in an undeveloped state, that can be remediated if the board chooses to approve this project. So, I don't think it's quite, it can't get worse. I think actually it's quite the opposite, it has to get better. And that is one of the powers of the board. You know, forty-B, call it what it is, but this board, I'm proud to say, has stood up to it for as long as I've represented you, has won big cases at the Housing Appeals Committee where no one else has. And I've never seen the board really pay much attention to whether it's forty-B, forty-A, or forty-one. You do the right thing for the community. This is just another one of those applications and that goes, speaks, I think specifically to stormwater runoff.
Thank you, John.
Sure. I think Jim would like to respond. Again, we certainly want to cooperate with that as well.
I appreciate the comments from his attorney and that's one of the reasons why we have these open forum hearings is to find out things like this. So, that's an issue that we were not aware of. So, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but I'd like to, you know, we'll probably have to do some additional topography in this low spot area. So, that would be something that would be looking to do prior to the next hearing.
Yeah.
Thanks. Good. Thank you. You picked up on it very quickly. Anybody else have any comments, questions, one way or the other? If not, we'll await your check. When we get your check, we will turn Amory's hearing on and move forward. How much time would the board like to have before we bring this up here? How much time would the board like to have before we bring this up here? We don't know exactly how long it's going to take Amory to do it.
November?
Thirty days? Reasonable? I can't answer. I don't know.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Chairman. It might be, it's not a complicated site, although, as Jim was saying, maybe there's a separate level of information that our faculty has to provide. You, you continued High Point to the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
So, I assume I'll be here for the fourteenth, so I'll be here for that, if that's kind of going to be for you.
That, that makes, I mean, I, you know, that, that's fine. I like to do approximately a month, but it's true with the first peer review, and it's already virtually the end of September. That's fine.
Can you kind of do the changes to this?
I'm sorry?
Because if they review it, and then they change it, they have to submit everything in first.
Yes.
It's not a significant change, it's just some changes to the.
Just say something, you can second that.
Yes, we'd like that, to revise.
How long should that take you?
Two, three weeks.
Okay.
So, in the meantime, you could probably get the proposal from Amory, set up the contract, and then we'd have that ready to submit to the.
November fourteenth. November fourteenth. November fourteenth. November fourteenth, reasonable?
That, that works for us, is that okay?
That with you, John?
Yes, thank you.
Then there's a motion to continue this to November fourteenth.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on it?
In favor?
Everybody's in favor, continue to that date. Okay?
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Or thereafter.
And thereafter, I know. Thank you very much.
Well, you've got the dry tickle, just like I've got. I don't know where this came from.
John, a lot, a lot of this.
I have some postnasal drip. It just doesn't seem to want to. And I had a, I have a thing of cough drops. Took a pile that I was going to put in my pink, and I forgot them. I go with the sugar brick, so.
No, there's no more work, no, but that's the problem.
Okay.
Yes.
I know, and I'm here today, and I'm doing a, doing a High Point. Check it. Favor, favor, favor. You favor adjourn on the.
Is favor.
Are you in favor of adjourn?
Oh, please adjourn. Please, please. Thank you very much.